Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for July 8 to order. If everyone would please stand or pledge allegiance. Sorry, Alderman Dorman, please leave.
.......................................
Thank you. Bradley, please call for him. Done here. Dorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Griff?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Keakah?
Here.
Dickman?
Yes.
Josephine?
Here.
Andy Emmerich?
Here.
Ted, your honor. Thank you. So, protocol, I know tonight, we got a lot of things going on, so if you have cell phones, just please make sure they're on silent or turned off. If you want to address the council or myself, please do so as a body, not as any individual. Remember, you're communicating with all Davenporters and Quad City folks around the region, so address us as a whole. You'll have five minutes. Please state your name and vote. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Will Alderman please move approval of the City Council meeting, minutes for June 24?
So move second.
There's a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you. Will Alderman move approval of the special City Council meeting, minutes for June 25?
So.
There's a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, is there any updates today?
I know many of you have reached out regarding fireworks and some of the complaints or concerns that your citizens have shared with you, so I've got police and fire working on kind of an after-action summary that we hope to have ready for preliminary conversation Tuesday.
Thanks for that. We look forward to that, and I'll look forward to discussion, maybe a council with the staff, on some of the ways we can handle some of the disrespect to our parks and areas and trash that was left. I don't know if there's anything we can do, but boy, I'd love to have that conversation because some of that stuff that went on was terrible, so look forward to that. Will Alderman please move approval, repeat, for the report of the Committee of the Whole for July 1?
Move the report?
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We have two proclamations this evening. One is for the Ironman Battalion Day, July 11, and for Earth Month. So I'll read the first one. So proclamation, and Staff Sergeant Maria Jaren will accept on behalf of the 133rd. So whereas service in the Iowa National Guard has been a selfless and noble calling for generations of Iowans dating back to the Civil War, and whereas thousands of northeast Iowa civilian soldiers have volunteered for service at Iowa National Guard Armories in Waterloo, Dubuque, Davenport, O'Leary, Iowa City, Iowa Falls, and Charles City, and whereas the 133rd Infantry Regiment, a part of the 34th Infantry Division, has continuously operated in northeast Iowa since July 11, 1921, and whereas the first battalion of the 133rd Infantry Regiment is proudly known as the Ironman Battalion, a distinction earned during World War II for a record 611 consecutive days in combat, and then reaffirmed during a nearly 22-month mobilization deployment supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom from 2005 to 2007, and whereas 550-plus members of the Ironman Battalion are ready for a year-long federal deployment to southwest Asia as part of Operation Spartan Shield, and just an update, they left today for the Middle East with operations expected in 27 Middle Eastern countries, and whereas community support is vital for the long-term success of the Iowa National Guard and for the morale and well-being of the Ironman Battalion, members and their families at home. Now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim July 11 as one, the first of the 133rd Infantry Regiment, Ironman Battalion Day, in recognition of the vital role of the Ironman Battalion in our national defense, and hereby encourage residents to seek out ways to support our northeast Iowa National Guardsmen and women and their families as they answer their country's call in uniform service in Iowa and across the globe, dated this 8th day of July 2020. Happy to present to Staff Sergeant.
Yes.
Proclamation, second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we just want to say thank you from the Ironman Battalion, from Lieutenant Colonel Gingrich and Sergeant Major Lott. We're just grateful to be a part of this community now. For those of you that don't know, we are now in Davenport, and we just appreciate all your support, and we're honored and privileged to accept this today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Staff Sergeant. Please pass on our support to the families and any help we can assist with. Please don't hesitate to ask.
Yes, Mayor.
Next proclamation is Earth Month, July 2020, and Alderman Lee will read and present that proclamation.
I am honored to present this proclamation, and for those of you who are 45 years younger or less, I'd like to give just a little bit of context for this. It's being accepted by the Progressive Action for the Common Good. The massive economic growth that occurred after World War II and initiated during the Industrial Revolution was based on using our air, our waters, our oceans, and our lands for free disposal of our chemical, biological, and solid toxic wastes. We saw major changes in the 60s as people started to understand that rivers should not burn, air emissions should not kill people, and houses built over chemical dumps should not cause cancer, and that we were no longer willing to accept that. So 50 years ago was the first Earth Day, and 10% of the total population of the United States participated in coast-to-coast rallies to demonstrate for environmental protection and against the continued deterioration of the environment and associated serious health impacts. And this was not only the United States, it was also global. In 1972, the United Nations sponsored its first, basically, Earth Day, a 10-day conference on the human environment in Stockholm, and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that in Stockholm, Sweden. And I cannot tell you as a senior in high school what I learned about how we're all interrelated. So with that, it's critical we remain aware of our own impacts on the environment and continue to take responsible actions. Our national policy, as stated in the National Environmental Policy Act passed unanimously by Congress in 1970, imagine passing something unanimously now in Congress in 1970, said that "we are the trustees of the environment for present and future generations of Americans." Like this little one here, we have a responsibility to everybody. So this proclamation recognizes the commitment that Davenport makes to that policy, and thank you, members of Progressive Action for the Common Good, for receiving this proclamation, which I will now receive, and it will be accepted by PJ Slobodan. Whereas, Earth Day is celebrated with a goal of inspiring an appreciation for our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection, and whereas, the celebration of this day marks an annual review of and commitment to the principles of the first Earth Day, and whereas, Earth Day marks a renewed commitment to environmental stewardship and to the implementation of sustainability efforts, and whereas, the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, global health issues, climate change, food and water shortages, and whereas, a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through education, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns, and whereas, it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change to combat the aforementioned global challenges, and whereas, due to many nationwide closures during the month of April, the city of Davenport honors Earth Day by extending it to the month of July in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim July 2020 as Earth Month, and do urge all citizens to implement practices designed to preserve and protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security dated this 8th day of July 2020. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to... Thank you. I'd like to present this to PJ Slobodan, but also to all the people here from Progressive Action for the Common Good. So as I read your name, would you please stand up? PJ Slobodan. Rose Anderson. Susan Lighthouser. Ann McCluskey. Lori McCollum. Anne Shirkaroff. Carol Schmidt. Holly Taylor. Shirley Johnson. Joe Kent. Have I missed anyone? Good. Thank you very much. PJ, if you would come up? And then I want to make sure I don't forget to say this. I present this to you as representative of the Progressive Action for the Common Good, and thank you very much for all that you do as a group. You want us to move on? Thank you, PJ. Thank you. They have also asked me to read that Progressive Action for the Common Good will be hosting Earth Day 2020 on Saturday, July 18, at the Freight House Market from 9:30 to 2:00. There will be exhibitors of music, and for everyone's safety, please wear face covering and maintain social distance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we have one presentation swearing in, wonderful time, four or three individuals to our fire department, so if you don't know the way, I'll pause a moment. Chief Carlson, meet me up. Is that the honor of presenter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Mike Carlson, Chief of Davenport Fire Department. Tonight is a special night for the Davenport Fire Department. This is an opportunity for me to introduce our four newest firefighters to the City Council and to our community, and allow the Mayor Mattson to officially swear these gentlemen in. Also, it's a special moment for these young men, as they formally make a pledge to protect and serve our citizens, and a proud moment to share with their families, that family members have an opportunity to pin the badges on these young firefighters. These firefighters are important members to the Davenport Fire Department family, but they are even more important members to the family they have at home. They are sons, husbands, fathers to these people that have supported them through this process and are here to celebrate with them this evening. These four young men with the city of Davenport started in late February. Normally, our new recruits go through an eight-week training process. This eight-week period allows the firefighters to become properly trained, achieve the various state certifications needed, and gain the experience to be assigned to a 24-hour shift. Unfortunately, in March of this year, the COVID virus struck our community. As a result, these four young men had their training period condensed and were assigned to a 24-hour shift sooner than expected. But these firefighters accepted these new challenges while finishing their training for the state certification they were working on shift. Now it's my privilege to present our newest Davenport firefighters. I call up Timothy McCumber. Tim McCumber was born and raised in Davenport, graduated from Davenport Central High School. After high school, he joined the Army Reserves. He has been a part of the Army Reserve for 17 years and is still serving. Firefighter McCumber has been deployed twice in both Iraq and Afghanistan. Prior to being a firefighter, Tim worked as a union carpenter and has worked facility maintenance for the Rock Island Arsenal National Cemetery. He has his EMT certification and associate's degree from Scott Community College. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, coaching youth sports, and doing pretty much anything outdoors. He has two sons, Owen, who is seven, and Wyatt, who is five. His wife Jessica will be pinning his badge on him this evening. Mr. Mayor?
I state your name.
I, Tim McCumber.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
You're a firefighter. Good job.
Next, I'd like to call up Daniel Thark. Daniel Thark was born and raised in Bett North Iowa. He graduated from Bett North High School, where he was a three-sport athlete. Daniel went on to St. Ambrose, where he played quarterback and studied political science. Daniel received his EMT from Eastern Iowa Community College and worked at Medic EMS before joining the Davenport Fire Department. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his wife, dog, and nephews, hopefully not in that order. And he also enjoys hunting, fishing, and riding a bike. His wife Logan will be pinning his badge on him this evening.
I state your name.
I, Daniel Thark.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now, hereafter, required by law.
You're a firefighter.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Next, I'd like to call up AJ Peterson. AJ Peterson grew up here in Davenport, Iowa. He attended West High School, where he played football. It was on the drum line. AJ continued his football career while earning a bachelor's degree at St. Ambrose University. AJ obtained his EMT certification and is currently finishing his firefighter certifications. He enjoys spending time with his friends and family, and is looking forward to going to paramedic school in the near future. His grandfather, retired Davenport Police Officer Art Miller, will be pinning his badge on him this evening.
I state your name.
I, AJ Peterson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter requ... Required by law.
You're a firefighter.
Next, I'd like to call up Kyle Nichols. Kyle Nichols grew up in Davenport, Iowa. He went to Sumpton High School, where he played football, baseball, and basketball. After graduation, he went to Scott Community College and received his EMT. Kyle then transferred to Kirkwood Community College and received his associate's degree in paramedic and firefighter one. Kyle enjoys outdoor activities, playing sports, hunting, fishing, and spending time with his family. His fiance, Samantha, will be pinning his badge on him this evening.
Josephine says, hey, congratulations. I state your name.
I, Kyle Nichols.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Discharge all the duties of a firefighter.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or... Now and hereafter required by law.
You're a firefighter.
These four young men will make great additions to the Davenport Fire Department, but this will be possible without the continued support from the mayor and the council. We truly appreciate the continued support of the Davenport Fire Department. Thank you.
I'll pause if family want to take a break here and leave, unless you want to stay for the rest of our agenda. Yes, I agree. Kyle.
Kyle.
Josephine, congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now we'll move on to petitions and communications with council and the mayor. Ms. McGinnis, please.
Your Honor, we're running tonight. I hope everybody is cool. We're a little hot and damp here because we had a city council last week, so I'll be sitting down in the square. But I wanted to talk about something tonight. Our current meeting will be starting July 2nd, and unfortunately, instead of reading the information, we're going to be in Indiana. But it'll be at 10 o'clock, and you can go to the city website and drop in if you need to send us a... There's a... .......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Griff.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to bring up Parks Director Chad Dyson to talk about inclusive play. So Davenport has been leading the way in the area with inclusive play. We've got the Miracle Field, and we've got Gaze coming online here this summer, and then we learned about some additions that are happening in Prairie Heights Park. And then last week, I saw on our Facebook the Courage League Sports, and I didn't totally know what that was. So if you could talk about, do we have a ribbon-cutting date for Gaze yet, and what Courage League Sports is? And then I would just continue, or encourage you to continue to drive inclusive play in the city of Davenport, and I look forward to seeing more projects, and hope that the council will support.
Chad Dyson, Parks Director. We do have a tentative ribbon-cutting date set for August 13 for Gaze. Construction has resumed out there with the concrete being done, and then the surfacing will be the last touch. So we're coordinating, you should all get an invite for that relatively soon, but that's the date we're targeting for opening that playground. And then, yeah, we're really excited about our partnership with Courage League Sports. They're a Des Moines-based nonprofit that has been around for roughly 10 years, providing adaptive and inclusive opportunities for recreation for all ages. And we partnered with them with four different programs, the first being Courage Cubs, which is the pre-Gaze, two- to six-year-old program. We also have the Active Adults Program, which is for all adults. We are doing school break camps with them for kids with disabilities, as well as their competitive youth sports program, which captures the remainder of that age range. So everywhere from two-year-olds all the way to adults will be covered through this program. It's really about social engagement and movement, and the real beauty that makes it truly inclusive and not only adaptive is that siblings, parents, friends can participate along with the kids, so it's truly an inclusive program, and that's what they're designed to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to request on that and all the good people of Davenport, that Mayor Mattson, our city administrator, and our police chief, reach out to the governor, the state attorney general, and the chief judge of Iowa Supreme Court, and assist them to drive any criminals and terrorists out of our community that are shooting up our great city. It was a little over two months ago that Mayor Mattson had a call for action because of the alarming increase in gun violence in our great city. Sadly, the only people that took that call to action was our great police department, our local law enforcement agencies. We don't want to surrender our great city to these criminals that are terrorizing all of us. So if the governor, and the attorney general, and the chief judge are unwilling to assist our police department tackling these gun crimes, I would like the opportunity to reach out to the president. President Trump has reached out at different times, offering his assistance to other cities that are being challenged by this gun violence. I don't want our great city to be falling into that situation. So the sooner we tackle this issue, you know, the sooner we're gonna look forward to being a great city. Alderman Mattson, maybe reaching out to the president with his call, with your call for action to him. I'm sure he will step up to the plate and assist. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Lee?
I just want to report, I did not have any ALTH award meetings since February was my last one, because I wanted to make sure that everybody was safe with the COVID-19. As our abilities, our technical abilities, thank you, Corey, have improved. I had my first one on Monday, and go ALTH, we had 15 attendees for my first award meeting doing it virtually, entirely virtually. I also wanted to do a shout-out to Chief Sikorski, who did an excellent presentation, and we had very good questions, as well as Sergeant Harris and Nevada Lemke for their presentation on the Good Neighbor Program, and also answering questions. And Nevada for helping me with the technical support as well. So it was a great success, and we will continue to do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else pausing? Okay, very good. We'll move on to discussion agenda. There is one item. It's a second consideration of an order supplementing Chapter 9.08, disorderly conduct of the Minnesota Code of Davenport. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none. Alderman, please move the consideration.
Move the consideration.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from any alderman or older woman? Alderman Jokic.
I would just, if it's appropriate now, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I go through. Can I wait? Oh, never mind.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the rule. Amber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Jokic?
Yes.
Nine, yes, Your Honor. Okay, that moves on to third. So the committee, the whole, recommended suspension of the rules and passage of third consideration now. So is there a motion for suspension of the rules?
Move.
There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the rule. For suspension. Dunn? Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jokic?
Yes.
And Amber?
Yes.
And, yes, Your Honor. So the rules are suspended. Is there now a motion to pass this on third consideration?
Move.
Consider it on third consideration. Okay, motion and a?
Second.
Second. Is there any public with comment? Any alderman or older woman? Very good. Brian, please call the rule. Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jokic?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
And, yes, Your Honor. Ordinance is adopted. Okay, now we move on to the next item, which is approval of all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second?
I move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for all items on consent. Please roll call, Brian. McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jokic?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Dorman?
Yes.
And, yes, Your Honor. Very good. Everything on consent's approved? Next item, is there any other ordinance, resolutions, or motion? Seeing none. Is there any public with business?
I need to yell, Gilmar, live in the sixth ward. I haven't really planned on saying anything, but anytime there's a swearing-in of public safety people, I would stay out of the lobby because it's their night, not mine. But I would like to see recognition of the public safety employees that are retired. I'd like to see a similar, you know, swear-in, have the chief, whether it's the police chief or fire chief, just give a couple of words, shake your hand, you know, and send them on the way back. I think we really need to encourage the people that are swearing-in to stay for 20, 25, 30 years. So it's just a word. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Dale? Anyone else? Hearing seeing no one, are there any reports or speakers? None? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? We adjourned. Good weekend. Thank you, everyone.